Thank you. That was appropriate for this evening. So now we'll move on to the special meeting and the reason we're here is to conduct a study session and provide direction on the draft residential parking permit program guidelines. City manager?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council and our residents, both here and watching from home. I'll first start off by saying tonight's study session is breaking from our prior tradition in not televising our study sessions because study sessions are typically a time for the council to delve, delve deep into issues. We broke from that tradition today because this is a topic of significant importance to all of our residential neighborhoods. There have been many public meetings on this topic and we thought that it was appropriate to both record and televise tonight's discussion. And so we are here tonight having worked on the core guidelines of a potential residential parking program to put those before council for a number of policy considerations. And we will discuss a number of components of a potential expansion of a residential parking program here in the city of San Bruno and ask the council for direction tonight. Based on that direction, we will return, should the council direct us to do so, we will return with a resolution and ordinance formally implementing the program shortly thereafter. So let me first say that the city of San Bruno does have a residential parking program in the municipal code. However, that program was only limited to the prior Caltrain station in the area immediately adjacent to that station. And so while if people have been asking, well, don't we have a program? Yes, we do, but when the station moved to its current location on Huntington and San Bruno Ave, essentially the program that we have on the books is no longer in effect and not used. And so everything we're talking about tonight and the eventual changes to the municipal code will actually amend that section and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. So here with me tonight is Jimmy Tan, our Public Works Director, and we will have Police Lieutenant Ryan Johansson also talk during our presentation and he'll talk about enforcement. So first, let me give an overview of the agenda for tonight. So we'll provide a background on a RPP, residential parking permit program. We'll talk about some of the issues that contribute to our parking issues here in the city of San Bruno. We'll give a definition and talk about frankly, what is a residential permit parking program? What are some of the pros and cons of programs like that? And then we'll talk about the policy considerations for council and then we'll provide you with some initial staff recommendations for each of those policy areas. We'll then go through a process map of what a residential parking program application and vote would look like. And then next, we'll talk about enforcement. And then after that, we are open to further conversations and questions from council. So first, let me begin with a little background. As you all know, a joint parking subcommittee was formed of two council members, two members of our Traffic Safety and Parking Committee and two members of city staff back in 2018. A number of recommendations were developed and the guidelines that you have before you in the packet and that we'll go through are really based on the recommendations from that joint committee. They're also based on staff analysis. There's some benchmarking analysis that we'll show you of cities in San Mateo County that have similar programs, what they charge for the programs, et cetera. And so it was based on that. And it was also based off a number of conversations that we had with the community. I think many of the members here were also at that January meeting, town hall, that we had on parking issues where we talked about that a residential parking program is not the silver bullet to our parking issues. It is really just one mechanism that may help alleviate the situation. But we did commit to the community that we would come back in July with potential, with draft guidelines for the program and that's what we're here to talk about today. So a little bit on what contributes to our parking pro, our parking issue in some of our residential areas. In general, there are internal factors and external factors. We all know that we have a lot of residences that park multiple vehicles on the street, not just one, not just two, sometimes three and more. We have houses with short driveways that don't accommodate the cars of today. We have garages that are too small to accommodate the vehicles of today. And we have garages that are not used for vehicle storage. And so it's a combination of internal factors. External factors, we have the non-resident commuter, people that may be coming to Caltrain and parking in our residential neighborhoods. We have body shops and other commercial businesses that contribute to the parking congestion in a number of our areas. We have visitors. Typically, it's not an issue of visitors creating to the parking program, the parking issue, but in a community like ours where there are significant challenges with the built environment, just a few visitors can really take away that parking space that our residents counted on. And so it goes without saying that our built environment in a number of our residential neighborhoods frankly just don't accommodate the vehicle ownership in our community. And so one potential component of the solution is an RPP. So what is an RPP? An RPP limits the number of vehicles that each residence can park on public streets in a defined zone. There are special time restrictions, permits are required, and there's dedicated enforcement because a program is really not successful unless it's being enforced. However, RPP programs can be controversial and they can be polarizing. And so why is that right? Why are they controversial and why are they polarizing? I think one of the biggest things is change. It changes the way someone uses and experiences their community. We'll have homeowners that have owned for 10, 20, 30 years that, should the community adopt it, can no longer park on the public street. They will have to get a permit to park on the public street and the number of vehicles that they can park on the public street may be limited. And so it will have a significant impact on the community. It will have a significant impact on usability of what many view as a right to park on the public street for free. That's why they pay their tax dollars. But in areas where parking is impacted and there are challenges, this is a measure that a number of cities employ. And RPP programs are most commonly implemented in commercial areas or near transit and that's some of the conversation that we had with the community. Because in many ways, your typical RPP program is not like the program that we are proposing to you today. And that's because your typical program, RPP program, is in a transit area or a commercial area where you're really trying to address those others, those other people that are coming into our community, taking up our parking. And so oftentimes, the programs provide free permits. They are unlimited for residents because it's not the residents that are causing the parking congestion, it's those others. So we want, so oftentimes, for example, in the city of Berkeley, you'll see RPP programs around Bart stations and in Oakland, you'll see them around transit stations. But for a lot of our communities, while the parking issue may be impacted or made worse because of the others, the non-residents or the visitors coming in, we know from talking to the community and our own experiences that a lot of the parking challenges that we have are frankly, people that live in our community and there's just too many vehicles ownership and too many vehicles parked on the street. And so that's why our program may look and feel a little different than what I think some people are used to because frankly, we're addressing a different issue. We're addressing sort of the reverse of what your typical RPP program is used for. So a quick highlight in some of the pros and cons of an RPP program. So a pro, the elimination or significant reduction of non-resident parking in the RPP zone. It may increase the availability of on-street parking. The key word there is "may" and we'll talk a little bit about that because it really all depends on the size of the street, how many available spaces are on the street, but also how many permits you allow for each house. It may increase the quality of life in neighborhoods that have been negatively impacted by outside, outsiders that generate parking demands. It may discourage excess vehicle ownership. So if a dwelling unit is limited to two parking permits on-street, if they currently have three or four or five cars parked on the street, it may discourage their ownership of those vehicles because they will not be able to park those vehicles in their neighborhood. And it may also contribute to the removal of non-motorized vehicles such as boats, motorhomes, trailers, construction-related equipment or other commercial vehicles, those non-motorized items that are, that are parked on streets. Some of the cons, our residents and visitors may seek to purchase permits for on-street, for on-street parking. I'm sorry, residents and visitors must seek to purchase a permit if they want to park on-street. And so that's what I talked about earlier, it's a change. You no longer can park on the street for free. You have to go through a process that requires a registration and you provide certain information that we know that you live at the home, that your vehicle is registered at the home. And so that, that requires a process, an administrative process that we set up that may seem to some as burdensome, but if the program is to have, have an impact, we need to set up a process that we know that you live there, the vehicle is registered there and you're able to have that permit. Another con is paying for a permit and still not being able to find a space may be a challenge. And so people may pay for a parking permit to park in their neighborhood and they may come home one night and there's not an available space on the street. So an RPP program does not guarantee you a space on the street. It does not guarantee you that parking space in front of your house. It essentially just limits the number of parkers on the street and takes away the non-resident parkers. And it may contribute to spillover effects outside of the parking district from residents that have more vehicles than the allowed permits. And so people may essentially try and game the system and park further outside or outside of their direct neighborhood that may have adopted an RPP program and so it may have spillover effects. Okay, so now let's get into the core policy decisions that are before the council. And there are a few listed here and I'll just run through them really quick and then the next slide will have staff recommendation. So the first one is mandatory or not? Mandatory or is it a voluntary program that, that residents opt-in to neighborhood by neighborhood? What is the enforcement window? Is it 24 hours a day? Is it only at night? Is it during the daytime? Et cetera. How many permits? So is there a limit on the number of parking permits that a dwelling unit can purchase? Is there visitor, guest or caregiver parking and how is that managed? And how many visitor permits can be had on a per-month or per-year basis and what do they cost? What are the exemptions? So is there an exemption on the weekend or is there an exemption on holidays? And what is the implementation process? And we have a full process map with multiple steps that we'll walk you through. And so kind of distilled down into seven points, those are the policy items that we're asking for council direction on tonight. So what is the staff recommending? So the staff is recommending a voluntary opt-in program citywide. It is a significant change to our residential neighborhoods and the staff is recommending a voluntary program with a process that we'll go through where they, there's a community sponsor or neighborhood sponsor. They do essentially a pre-application with the city. They go out and get signatures of their neighbors. And then there's a more formal process that the city undertakes and a survey that the city undertakes where at least 50% of the residents in that area need to vote and 2/3 have to say yes before a RPP program is implemented. And so we're recommending that. We are not recommending a mandatory program. However, what we, when we looked into it, what we said is should the city council ever adopt paid parking in, for example, downtown, on-street and in our off-street parking lots? We would look to implementing a mandatory RPP zone in those immediate adjacent residential neighborhoods to avoid that spillover effect with someone maybe not wanting to pay the parking meter but driving a few blocks over. And really what, what that's to capture is if the neighborhoods around downtown decide not to have a voluntary program, we do not want to further contribute to the parking situation should there be parking meters implemented downtown. What is our enforcement window? And so our recommendation is to have essentially a nighttime program, 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM. So why is that? Well, the problem we're trying to solve is residential parking and one of the large concerns that we've heard from our community is we come home and we can't find a park and we're having to park several blocks away. And we're recommending essentially no change to the various, in some neighborhoods, there are posted hourly parking signs, but essentially no change during the daytime. That also impacts our enforcement. A program like this frankly is a lot easier to enforce if we have a, a shorter enforcement window. And for people that have daytime visitors or daytime caregivers, it allows for an easier implementation of the whole guest parking program. And so we're really trying through what we're recommending today is to provide a, a measure of increased parking availability in the nighttime hours, 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM. Quantity of permits, two per dwelling unit is what is recommended. What has been asked is, well, if a resident has a driveway, can they only have one? Or if a resident has a very long driveway, so they frankly have the ability to fit four cars on their private property, can you, can they, can the city not give them a on-street parking permit? Or for apartment buildings that provide onsite parking, can the city not provide them a parking permit? The answer is we can't discriminate based on housing type and so we really need to provide the same amount of parking permits per dwelling unit. And so for one, ease of implementation and two, because as we looked at what we thought would be more frankly palatable for the community to accept, we settled on two parking permits per dwelling unit. A large part of that is anecdotally, we didn't think one parking permit per dwelling unit was reasonable or would be accepted. And on a lot of our streets, if you give three parking permits per dwelling unit, it's almost essentially an ineffective program because you can't fit that, that many cars on a street. And so we sort of landed around two parking permits per dwelling unit. There were prior iterations of these guidelines that went to TSBC that called for a street-by-street analysis from our traffic staff to essentially count how many parking, available parking spaces are on each street and divide that by the number of dwelling units. And the sample essentially came up with one point something or two point something, typically on the lower two point something. And so we just thought it was more appropriate to simply limit it to two permits per dwelling unit. The cost, $35 per car for two years. That is our current fee in our master fee schedule for the prior parking program that was near the Caltrain station. On the next slide, I will show the fee comparison for the other cities and so we'll go through that in detail and I'll tell you why we landed there. But in essentially what you'll see is most cities frankly charge a very nominal amount for an RPP program. It's not a revenue capture program. It's really a program that is aimed to address a parking congestion problem. And so having a, having a fee amount, it would have to be frankly, a lot higher to capture the full enforcement and processing costs. And so we thought having a modest fee amount was appropriate and so no change to the existing fee. Visitor and guest parking, we're recommending 10 guest parking passes per month with a daily fee of $5 and a weekly fee of $25. What you'll also see is that cities set this at very, at varying amounts. The weekly fee is likely set to discourage people from essentially gaming the system by only getting two parking permits per dwelling unit, but then getting a visitor permit to supplement and have a third parking permit. And so there's typically a limit on visitor permits if a city is setting up a system like, like we do and there's a higher fee amount. As far as exceptions, we are recommending exceptions on holidays. So no RPP zone would be enforced on holiday, holidays, but the parking program would be enforced during the regular week. And actually a correction in the packet, it said that it would not be enforced on weekends. That was a typo. It would only, it would be enforced on weekends, just not on holidays is what the staff recommendation is. So again, I said I would provide some information on benchmarking. So we took a look at a number of cities in San Mateo County and you can see from this, Brisbane has a program, but it's not used. Burlingame and Coma, Daly City, Millbrae, Redwood City, San Carlos, San Mateo, Woodside have programs at varying amounts, but Foster City and Hillsboro does not. And so Burlingame has the highest fee amount, which is $50, an annual permit, $50 for two vehicles. There's a limit of two parking permits per dwelling unit and there are no guest parking permits. Coma has a program that provides no cost, up to four vehicles per dwelling unit and a 14-day limit of up to 15 visitor parking permits per year. Daly City is free, unlimited number of permits and no, no guest parking permits. Millbrae has a little bit of a hybrid structure where the first permit is free and the second permit is $25. Each dwelling unit can have four permits and there are two visitor permits for $25 each annually. Redwood City, free, three permits per dwelling unit, 10 visitor permits per year. San Carlos, free, four permits per dwelling unit, two guest parking passes. San Mateo, free, unlimited parking permits per dwelling unit, one guest permit. Woodside, free, depending on where you live, two or four parking permits per dwelling unit and typically guest parking passes are provided for special events. So sort of the summary is cities implement it differently and frankly, they do it based on the problem they're trying to solve. And so the city council has wide discretion in the policy items that are before you. Again, the recommendations that are, that staff is making is geared toward our specific issue, which is residential and trying to provide a measure of additional parking availability from 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jimmy Tan, our Public Works Director, who will go through the process that we are recommending for the voluntary opt-in program.
Thank you. This slide shows the process for implementing the residential parking permit district. Again, this process was derived through the joint parking subcommittee and was also presented to the city council back in 2018. So some of the requirements within the process are very similar to other agencies, what they're doing and as previously mentioned, right now it's, has been modified slightly from what we had developed from the subcommittee to streamline the implementation process. So I'll go over the step-by-step in detail a little bit, but I just wanted to share with you the steps here, you know, starting from the upper left-hand quarter, you know, you have a step one, as a voluntary process, the residents or the sponsor will file a permit, file an application with the public works to start the process. Then the public works department will review the, the permit applications. And a step three, I want to make sure that if it gets approved, the residents or the sponsor will go back out to the community, the neighborhood to get the petitions signed and 50% plus one of the respondents have to be provided, of the dwelling units have to be, have to respond in order to be, the process to continue. If it doesn't, it gets denied. Public Works will send a letter denying the, the permit parking zone. If it gets approved, it goes to step four, staff, again, what the city manager mentioned, we are limiting the, the permit to two permits per dwelling unit, which is what's indicated in the current municipal code as well. But you know, if there are any potential that we can see that may, may increase the parking permits, we may end up having to study that area and by looking at the, the parking spaces and the dwelling units onsite. Step five, the staff from public works will send a survey to the resident to determine the support for the program again, to make sure that 50% of the survey gets returned and 67% of that gets, are, are, you know, are in support of the, the residential parking permit zone. And then if it is, then we will send a letter to the neighborhood to let them know, let them know that it hasn't been approved and it will come back to city council in step six for the adoption of the resolution. And then step seven will notify the residents for that. So that's the gist of the overall process, but I'll go into a little more detail here. Going back to step one, again, the neighborhood sponsor or resident will need to submit an application to the city's public works department. The application is actually included as part of the staff report, which needs to be filled out and it should include, you know, describing the parking problem in the neighborhood, what is the nature of the overflow parking problems there? Now how often does it occur and whether, you know, they can identify any of the, the parking impact generators that has caused the, the parking issues? And then describing how a residential permit parking district will eliminate or reduce the overflow parking impacts. And the application shall also include the proposed parking district boundaries. So we're hoping that the, the resident and sponsor would determine which streets that they would like the, the permits to be proposed, to be initiated within the neighborhood. And then staff, currently right now, what we're doing is we're proposing that a permit boundary includes a minimum of three contiguous blocks so that in any orientation, but it must include both sides of the streets. So we just can't have one side of the street would have residential parking permit zone and not the other side of the street, right? So that's for step one. For step two, as I mentioned, you know, staff from the public works department will then review the application, determine whether it meets the criteria. If it does, we'll move over to step number three, which is the residence petition. And this petition is also included as part of the, the staff report packet and it contains information of, you know, the neighborhood facilitators, sponsors and requiring them to, you know, print their names, address, phone numbers and signatures of, you know, all the residents within the, the permit zone that's being proposed. The petition requires that only one adult signature who is a permanent resident in the proposed permit district will be considered. And then a dwelling unit is, as defined in the, the city's municipal code right now is a, means that it's a house, apartment, condos, townhouse or other type of residence designed and used for residential occupancy, but not including motels or hotels. Then a response rate of 50% plus one of the dwelling units in the proposed district is required. But right now currently, we're not considering any accessory dwelling units as part of the petition process. Step four, on-street parking service, again, this is something that we may or may not do. It really depends on the situation of the neighborhood. As the city manager mentioned, that the, you know, currently there will be no more than two permits that'll be issued for each dwelling unit. And again, this is consistent with what is indicated in the, the municipal code. However, you know, if we feel that there is, there may be an increase, we may, we may end up going out there and then do some parking occupancy surveys to determine, you know, whether there's any on-street spaces, would determine the number of on-street spaces versus the number of dwelling units and determine whether it's possible to increase the permits. But you know, by limiting the number of permits, I think that will help ensure that the permit holders are able to find the, the on-street parking space. That's the reason, of the intent to limit the number of spaces. For the survey, for step five here, the public works department will also conduct the survey of the properties within the proposed district and the survey will be mailed to all the dwelling units within the proposed district and only one signature per dwelling unit will be counted. And a minimum of 50% of the surveys must be returned to the public works department and we'll set a timeframe for that process. And 67% or 2/3 of the returned survey must support the establishment of the, the parking district in order for the process to continue. And this is, again, this requirement is what was derived as part of the parking subcommittee and I had, this requirement hasn't changed throughout, for this process to be implemented. So if the return survey meets the requirement, the public works director will draft an email, draft a letter to the neighborhood to let them know that- draft a letter to the neighborhood to let them know that, know if the results. If it's not, then we will also draft a letter denying the request. Right now, the other thing that wasn't discussed as part of the Parking Subcommittee, right now, we're proposing that there will be a two-years moratorium on new requests, so that before, you know, the residential parking permit, so let me rephrase that, there will be a two-years moratorium on new requests for permit parking within, that will take effect if there's, if it's denied. We just don't want these neighborhoods to keep coming back to the city and reapplying for the just parking permit, you know, time and time again. So we want to make sure if it's denied, it will take two years for the process to come back, to start again. And so, but if the resident neighborhood made petition, made appeal to deny request to the Public Works Department within the thirty days of receiving notice, appeals will be heard by the city council, which is pursuant to the section 1.32 of the municipal Once, if it's approved, the city, the staff will present the, prepare a staff report and present item to the city council for consideration to designate the parking district. At a minimum, we will include the following, you know, findings, you know, what we found, the results of the initial staff review, petition results, results of the parking survey, if needed, results of any of the TSBC reviews, and any residential permit district locations, the boundaries and restriction hours, and then also the cost of permits, which is thirty-five dollars for two years. So upon approval by the council, step seven, we will go back and notify the residents within the parking district to let them know about, you know, what the date of the enforcement will be, and when it will begin, and how to purchase the parking permits. But if the city council denies the request, again, it'll be a two-years moratorium on new requests for the streets that are involved in the denied area. Parking enforcement, Lieutenant Ryan Johansson's here to speak on behalf of that.
Thank you. So per municipal code that exists now, the police department is solely responsible for the administration and enforcement of any permit parking program we implement. It's a little bit difficult to ascertain what the personnel and equipment costs and needs will be to enforce a permit parking program until we have a better grasp on the scope of the programs that are implemented, the size of the neighborhoods that need to be enforced, and so on. Nonetheless, I think you can presume that the following would at least be required for administration and enforcement if any substantial permit parking districts are in fact established. We would need at least one additional full-time community service officer for the on-street enforcement. The estimated cost of that is a hundred and seven thousand dollars per year. One additional police clerk to handle the administration of the actual issuing of permits and the vetting to make sure that applications are valid, at an estimated cost of one hundred eighteen thousand dollars per year. One additional parking enforcement vehicle, at an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars about every five or six years. And then the purchase of a permit management software to enable us to manage the program as a whole, at an estimated cost of five thousand dollars per year. It should be noted, too, that through analysis of this proposed program, as well as existing programs in other cities, it's pretty clear that we cannot expect enforcement revenues to offset any significant portion of the program costs. That is the case in almost all cities that currently have residential permit parking programs, and we would expect it to be the case in San Bruno as well. It is also likely that proactive enforcement will not be possible during all hours of the parking restrictions. Proactive enforcement, for example, might be restricted to a period of time right when the restriction begins each day and right before the restriction ends each day, but would likely not be palatable throughout the entire evening hours of the proposed permit parking restrictions, as stated to you here tonight. Outside of those proactive enforcement windows, the police department would propose that we could enforce on a complaint basis with actual police officers and staff on hand, but that, of course, would be when resources allow, based upon other more pressing calls
Okay, so that concludes the staff presentation. And what is up before you are those policy areas and staff's recommendations. So we're here to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Do you have any speaker cards?
Yes, Steve Freitas.
I promise you, the meeting won't be as long as the last one, but I certainly wanted to give everybody the opportunity to go ahead and speak in case you had somewhere you needed to be.
First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for bringing this forward. We do need something, and they're identifying the problem. I just have a question on the guest parking, the ten number, is that a transferable thing? Someone with an Airbnb buying ten permits, or how that's going to work, you know? That can be a problem. And if you park on your own property, do you need a permit? I, say you have a classic car and it fits on your driveway because of the way your house is configured, what do you do if you have a vehicle for, like, my wife has a vehicle, I have one, we only have an opportunity for two permits, and then I have a nice '68 Camaro, that's my classic car, what do I do? And that's my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Was there anybody else here this evening that wanted to speak on this? Russ?
Again, thank you, Jimmy. I think, I appreciate your work. It's, I think it's long overdue that we have this implemented. I did want to make an internal fact here that I think we missed, and I think that is, is that we, as a community, have our children living at home much longer than we ever did before. They can't, they can't move out of our homes, they can't find a place to live. Rents for a one-bedroom apartment, as we all know at this stage, are thirty-eight, forty-eight hundred bucks. And so our children are staying at home a lot longer. Also with that, we also are building the, we built, we're building these units in the back of our homes. So I think that we need to find somewhere in the middle here. I think that if two is what it is, I'm good with it. I think we might want to go three for a hundred bucks, so we can actually get this implemented. I think there's maybe a lot of places where we're going to have trouble implementing this, but I think it's a great idea, whatever you guys decide. So thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Is there anybody else here that wanted to speak on this? Bill?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is really quick tonight. Thank you. In our neighborhood, it sounds like a great program, city staff, I mean, everybody's done a lot of work, you can tell, and it's really well thought out. In our neighborhood, I think, which is, I live on San Luis, we have a lot of commercial vehicles that park on our streets. And if we could, I don't know if we need a parking program as much as restricting commercial vehicles parked on our streets at night. I think that would be in itself a big benefit, but that's just my opinion.
Marco.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. So super excited that we're at the point that we are now with the potential parking permit program. A lot of respect to city staff and the police department, and everybody who's been involved in the Subcommittee for getting us to this point. I've been concerned about the enforcement piece of the parking permit program, so I've really appreciated the details that were shared tonight, the most elaborate details about the enforcement piece. But I would only encourage us to think a little harder and be a little more creative, a little more innovative about how we're going to enforce it. I understand the resources that are going to be needed to enforce it. The summary of all the positions and the vehicles and the software is, it's, they're scary figures, I get it, for a city that probably doesn't have that money. But I want to think innovative, and I'm thinking about how we, you know, we started campaigns in the chief's words of getting people to park their cars the right way, and did a selective enforcement, and kind of campaign communication strategy. And I know that really worked wonders on the east side. It worked wonders on Second Avenue, where you almost don't see anybody doing that anymore because there was a proactive wave of enforcement to cite people who were doing that. And that seems to have been done a very strategic way with limited resources. So I empathize with the cost, I empathize with the challenges, but I would really invite us to think a lot deeper about the enforcement piece, because if we don't get that right, essentially, the wheels are going to come off, and you're going to have people who are upset, saying, "I paid for it, and nobody's being cited, they still have other vehicles on the street." So again, just, we really, really need to get that piece right. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco. Sandra?
My concern with the voluntary method would be, you said three blocks? What happened is if the other, well, I know what's going to happen, we're going to have major overspill instead of addressing it in a holistic way, or possibly all mandatory. If we get three blocks, we're going to have spill, it's going to be a domino effect into the rest of the neighborhood, and then they're going to be coming in behind us instead of trying to get it all done, maybe around just the downtown area, just have that mandatory. And I can't emphasize enough how much enforcement is needed right now and not waiting for a parking permit. I've been coming to these meetings about four years now, and I've brought up Huntington since my first meeting. You can go down there any day, from Tanforan all the way over, there's boats, there's trailers, there's construction vehicles, there's cars that have flat tires. I don't see why we have to wait for a parking permit to address what we see in front of our eyes every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I don't see any mention of people with disabilities. Are they exempt? Are we ignoring them? What happened?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We'll go get that question answered for you. Stephen? You're welcome.
All right, first, I'd like to do what so many have that got up here already, and that's, "Thanks, staff." It's obvious that there's a lot of work that was done on this, that the Subcommittee that was put together did a lot of work. Thank you to the police for also giving us an idea on how we're going to enforce this. But I want to just have a little bit different spin on the enforcement piece than my wife did. I think that, I think in some neighborhoods, you know, the situation might be lessened just by proactively enforcing, especially if you go over to Walnut, and in the neighborhoods where there's a lot of the commercial cars that are in those neighborhoods that overflow, and they park there all day long. If we were able to just relieve those neighborhoods from the commercial vehicles that park on their streets, I'm not sure that a parking permit program would be needed. And this is, it's just elaborating on what Sandra said, I'm kind of just saying the same thing. I think if we enforce some of the ordinance and laws that we have already, we might have some neighborhoods that feel pressure parking today that might not feel that, and there might not be a need then for all of the administration cost that a permitting program would bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. So we'll bring it back to council. There were some of the questions that were asked, and maybe we can be very clear, there was one on the disability, there was one on commercial vehicles. So what is our practice, our, and required boats, vehicles and the disability? Start off with, please.
Sure, there were a couple ones. In regard to disability, there, in the guidelines on page thirteen, it mentions that anyone with a disabled placard is exempt from the RPP program. And then there's also the general program that if you can get a disabled zone painted in front of your house, if you go through the DMV program like that, and so that program will still apply, and if you have a placard, you would be exempt from the RPP program. There was also a question on three vehicles. And so at two permits per dwelling unit, it will be tagged to the vehicle by the license plate, and so if you did have that third vehicle, it would not, you wouldn't be able to trade permits, and so it would be tagged to the vehicle. That also addresses the question that was asked in regard to a potential Airbnb. It would be tagged to the license plate of that vehicle, and it would be a unique permit. In regard to the ADU question, ADUs would not receive two permits, there would only be two permits for the primary dwelling unit under state law. With the ADU, with building an ADU, you can actually take away a parking space to build an ADU. And so, given how ADUs are structured in state law and the purpose of building ADUs, we did not think that it was appropriate if there was an ADU on the property, because that ADU may have taken away an off, a, and off, a private off-street parking space to then allow extra parking permits for that ADU. In regard to commercial vehicles, I will have the police department talk about commercial vehicle enforcement.
Just to clarify as well on the disabled parking issue, which is a significant one, the California Vehicle Code provides for this. If you've got a valid disabled placard, you can park anywhere legally unless parking is always prohibited in that zone. So fire zones are basically the only place you can't park. So a permit parking district or any other law we implement at the municipal level would not override that California Vehicle Code. So disabled placards are covered. In terms of commercial vehicles, a little bit of a misnomer, right? It's not any more illegal to park a vehicle with a commercial plate or a vehicle for commercial use on a city street than it is to park your personal vehicle. There are some size restrictions against parking in residential neighborhoods in terms of the weight and/or the width and/or the length of the vehicle as to whether it can be parked there. But a vehicle being commercial plated or being used for commercial purposes by itself is not enforceable by the police department.
And then I think one of the questions was just the driveway. And I think if I heard it right, was if I've got this nice classic car, can you park in the driveway and there's no permit necessary? Was that, and there is not a permit necessary? So, and correct me, city manager, but yes, if you're in your garage, you're in your driveway, there is no permit required or necessary?
Yeah, it would only apply to on-street parking. To park on private property is not affected by this program.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to? Okay, why don't we start to, I wanted to try to get some of those answers that some of the folks have had, and I've gotten a couple emails that I have forwarded to the city manager for some additional questions, or whether it was just a typo, or whether it's just clarification, so we're working on those two. But why don't we bring it to council and see if council has questions of staff? Michael?
To the chair, thank you. So for starters, I kind of felt that the process seemed a bit onerous to the people that want to start a program. So it seemed like somebody would go to the effort of going out, collecting signatures from half of his neighbors, come back, and then the city would again pull those same people, bring that same data back, and then expect some, you know, to get that feedback. And I know we would probably want to verify that the signatures are valid, but it does seem like, it's almost repetitive and adds a lot more, well, it puts, it puts a lot of work on the residents, and then we, as a city, end up duplicating the work. So that's, that's one comment. I don't know if there's a way to possibly streamline that process for neighborhoods that are interested in doing it. I was curious about the comments that were made about just enforcing the existing conditions, and I'm just wondering if, I know sometimes we, as a council, we get excited about an idea, and we want to go chase down this permit thing, but are we confident that we've exhausted all other possibilities and that the permit program is in fact really required in some neighborhoods or in most neighborhoods? So.
Sure. Why don't we respond to both? I feel exactly how you just articulated when I first saw the process of, while this seems like a two-step process, can we create a one-step process? And then I talked to staff, and I looked back on what went to the TSBC committee, and it's a two-step process because the city needs to conduct the official survey and make sure that it's verified. And if we didn't have that initial step, we could essentially have anyone in the community raise their hand to say, "Hey, I want an RPP program," and we're going out to do survey after survey after survey. And so the two-step process is at least to have an initial assessment of, okay, one person came in and filled out the application, but before we do a lot of work on it, is there a significant interest in the community? a significant interest in the community in having this program? And so it's a, it's a way to have a, a quick initial gauging of community interest by having the resident go out and gather signatures of their neighbors and articulate to their neighbors that they're interested in this program and kind of see if there's a base level of support for that. And it's sort of a workload measurement, measure, but also just to see and have the neighborhood sponsor articulate to a broader group what they're interested in. On the other one of can we expand our existing enforcement efforts in general parking enforcement? I'll, I'll let the PD get up and talk about that. My initial is absolutely that takes resources. I've gone on ride-alongs with our law enforcement officers at night and I see how busy they are responding from call to call to call. And frankly, they don't have the time. And I actually don't think at our staffing levels, the community wants them diverting from some of their more important calls to tackle parking issues. And so should we have more proactive enforcement at night that, that comes with additional resources and additional dollars? And I do think that there are certainly other policy considerations that the city council can talk about. I believe there is the ability, if the city wanted to, to wholesale prevent the parking of non-motorized vehicles on public streets. So you, to prevent boat parking or prevent trailer parking on the city streets, and that's a policy decision that we, we can certainly look into should that be addressed. And so I'll look to PD to see is there any other elaboration.
I'm not sure that I have a tremendous amount to add to the city manager's comments on this issue. Enforcement has always been a priority of the police department. I think we've made that really clear with several additional parking enforcement initiatives we've taken on over the last several years, oftentimes diverting somewhat depleted resources to areas in order to accommodate what we think is a necessity within the community. That being said, it's a little bit of a misnomer to presume that enforcement removes vehicles from the streets. If, if a resident in a given area owns a vehicle and we cite it, it, it doesn't mean they're going to sell or get rid of the vehicle. Even when we impound vehicles on, say, a 72-hour ordinance violation, typically the, the owner's going to go get their car back. They're going to have to pay some fees, but then they're going to put it right back on the street. And so it's easy to point at enforcement as a way to remove vehicles from neighborhoods, but it's not terribly effective in doing so.
And just to elaborate on that, certainly we have a lot of people that play the 72-hour game, right? You just move your car every 72 hours. And so like Ryan Johansson said, even if we had more enforcement, people would just, they'd get the ticket and then they'd get better at playing the 72-hour game.
Okay. A couple more. Okay. So another concern I had was with the proposed fee for the, for the program. And I know that we don't really want to burden our residents with huge fees for parking on the street where it's always been free, but at the same time, when we look at the price tag of a program, if we're mandating this program and then we have no way to fund it, we're automatically putting ourselves back into a deficit position. And I was so excited that we had finally gotten to a point where we were starting with a free and clean, you know, clear of deficit budget for the year. And I mean, this, if, if we were to move forward with this, it would clearly put us back into a negative position because I don't know that any, there's any revenue coming from anywhere else that we could expect to fund this. So, you know, $35 for two years to me seems very, very low. I, I think it could be a little bit higher and still not be that much of a detriment to the, to the residents. So I would consider doing something higher. And I'm also wondering about the two-year span. Why, why not every year? Is that just to reduce the admin costs?
Yes, to reduce the admin costs. And so whether you want to have it be for a year or two years, we could adjust the permit fee accordingly.
And I'm assuming there'd be some mechanism in there for removing permits when somebody moves away so that somebody new comes in that they, they'd have the ability to?
Absolutely. And after the initial registration, we would like to have online renewals and online removals as well to take off that burden.
Okay. And you mentioned that the permit would be tied to a license plate, so it would be tied to a specific car. And so when you mentioned that, I was wondering, could there be a way to use automated license plate readers to go around and scan the cars rather, and perhaps save a little bit in, in the manpower required to find violators?
Absolutely. I can't tell you that we have that completely worked out. What I can tell you is a few things. One, absolutely, I think going to license plate readers would be an, an effective enforcement tool. Should the city council adopt this program, as, as has been stated before tonight, the true enforcement cost will really depend on how many neighborhoods actually adopt it. You know, if we have only, only one or two neighborhood, neighborhoods that adopt the program, we could likely provide enforcement at a moderate, at a moderate additional cost. And so it may not require the additional bodies, but if, as the lieutenant said, we have significant neighborhoods that do opt into the program, that, that would really trigger those additional body costs. And so there's still a question mark out there. I think as the city council knows, there has been recent court decisions with regard to chalking of tires as a potential, and the city attorney can correct my terminology, invasion of privacy?
It has to do with illegal seizures, searches and seizures of vehicles under the Fourth Amendment. I can elaborate a bit on that if you'd like.
I think that's not. But, but what that means is that a lot of municipalities are actually looking to go toward LPR, so license plate readers as an enforcement tool. Should we go there for our general enforcement practices or should we adopt that? It would actually make enforcement of an, of a RPP program a lot easier because we have had some demos and there are online programs that you can feed into your LPR system. So the vehicle simply drives by, snaps the license plate and you know if that vehicle has a permit or not because it's in the database. It will also create a more streamlined administration and registration process because you actually may not want to give out stickers. You may just input that license plate that is registered into the database and someone doesn't have a sticker that they need to put on your car. And so we certainly, as we look at, as all cities adjusting our enforcement practices, look at LPR and that system could be very helpful and actually cut down on some of our enforcement costs.
And if, if I may, council member, since we brought it up, I think it's important for the city council and the public to know that while there's no particular prohibition, legal prohibition on the city enforcing parking regulations, what's happened in the state legislature recently, much as in the, the housing field actually, there have been a number of bills submitted that would reduce or eliminate the ability of cities to enforce parking regulations. And the reason for that is because there is a belief among some members of the legislature that enforcing parking regulations, giving parking tickets and especially towing vehicles and imposing a large cost on the vehicle owner disproportionately affects people of lesser means. And so that those programs target those individuals or individuals from certain classes. And so there have been a number of bills proposed, for example, that would modify the rule that says we can tow cars after 72 hours. So there, the legislature has had some bills under consideration that would target that, that would target towing for expired registration and all sorts of other quality of life issues that are important to neighborhoods, but the legislature believes are unfairly, as I say, targeting individuals of lesser means because now they have to go spend a bunch of money to pay parking tickets. They might get their car impounded, it might be towed. So these are things that are on the horizon, I think, and important for both the city council and members of the public to know that while we're considering adopting a program and enforcing it now, there may be cases, and the city manager mentioned one of them about chalking tires. It's not difficult to see how if that case takes hold in California, that it might also apply even to non-physical seizures of vehicles. So even though the chalking the tire might be a physical touching or seizure of the vehicle and a violation of the Fourth Amendment, maybe driving by and beaming light rays at the license plate to take a picture of it, maybe that counts as well. So there's a whole host of things that are, I think, likely to come forward in the future that we should just keep in mind.
Leave it to the state. My final question slash comment. Could the program be structured in such a way that there is some flexibility in the hours of enforcement? Say like if a neighborhood has a weekday problem because of commuters, could that one then be we exempt holidays and weekends? In other neighborhoods where it's a seven a day, seven-day-a-week problem, we, you know, we only do holidays. Perhaps in areas where there is a lot more available parking, we do three permits versus where there's a lot of apartments and maybe there's a lot less, maybe we do fewer permits. So could, could it be structured in such a way where there is flexibility in order to meet the specific needs of specific neighborhoods?
I think the, the short answer is yes, we could do that. What we wanted to recommend was essentially a policy palette for the city council to consider. There is flexibility built in, in the area of the number of permits and the public works director talked about that. Should staff feel that there is the ability for more permits or should a resident petition the city and say that there's the ability for more, for more permits? What we thought about in those, and I think it's Seventh Street, where there is only houses on one side of the street. And so if you did a survey, you might be able to have more than two parking permits per dwelling. There might be streets like that that we could say, "Okay, you know what, given the unique configuration of this street, there is the ability to have more than two. The rules currently allow for that." I don't think the rules allow for the city manager to change or staff to change the enforcement window. Should council wish to do that, my recommendation would be to adopt a, a policy set that goes out and that's clear and transparent and give staff the flexibility to change those enforcement hours on a specific zone by, by zone basis. But we will still have a kind of clear articulation to the community of what an RPP program is.
Okay. Thank you. That was all my questions.
Marty? There was somebody who came, yes, there was somebody who came in, said we want to, certainly you've made your trip out here, so we want to let you speak.
Plymouth Ansbergs. Are you Arros Harmon?
All right, Arros, go ahead. If you can go to the mic, please. Thank you.
I just want to generally express my gratitude that this program is moving forwards at all. I wondered if anyone has considered making the cost of the permits progressive on the number of cars, make the first one cheaper, second one more expensive, just to, you know, provide some balance that if people are leaving more room on the, on the curb in front of their house, they should get some benefit for that compared to those who are using up the maximum.
Thank you.
I think Melbrae does that, actually. I think the first one's free and the second one's 25.
Marty, you ready? Thank you.
I first want to thank staff and thank for the work that the subcommittee put together. It has been a long time, but this is a complicated issue. There are lots of moving parts here. Confirmation of a permanent resident? I was curious on how we define that. Basically a driver's license, PG&E bill?
Yeah. So.
ID card, something like that?
What the program guidelines say is that you have to provide proof of residency and vehicle registration. And so that may take, in, in the detailed guidelines, that may take the form of a driver's license and vehicle registration or driver's license utility bill via vehicle registration.
Right. And, and the vehicle has to be registered to that property and with that resident. So just want to confirm that.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. A little, just to make it complicated. So if two residents from one property have opposing views on it, so one person signs the petition and then the letter comes back and the different, I mean, it's likely to happen, especially in an apartment.